...to construct our two career education programs, Engineering, Construction and Trades, and Life Sciences with a shared house in between. This is the current 628 student building, which the school committee approved. And this shows if we did a renovation, where the engineering, construction trades are, that color. The green is the life sciences and the shared resources. With the existing building, campus, just what you saw before, but here we've done it with a color scheme. This is our renovation addition. Once again, what we've done is, as you remember, we took off part of the sod with the entrances and we've added an addition over here. So we took off some structural there, add an addition here. And this shows the engineering, shared resources and trade, just like we did before on three levels. This is a rendition of the building on the footprint of the land. The athletic fields remain the same. And this is what the building would like. Again, we took off this part of the building and we added this, and this is for some of the construction trades. This is, oh, excuse me. This is a new student building for 628 students. Once again, we've used the same color schemes. One trade, one academy will be here and the other here with the shared facility in the middle. This would be the first floor and that's the second floor. Once again, this is the campus. We will be moving the building from Lexington over here over to Lincoln with parking in here and our athletic fields here with the building gone. And a rendition of the building. The cost, we looked at the renovation is 305,000, let's call it 306,000 square feet for the renovation, for the renovation addition, 284.5, and for the new construction, 242.8. Total building project and the duration of the project. Okay? That is what we have taken to all of our communities. We met with 15 of our 16 communities, Wayland being the only one that did not schedule a presentation for their community. In addition, we made a presentation to the Minuteman General Advisory Committee, so we met with a total of 265 people. We received 101 survey forms back, either through Survey Monkey or written. And you have the document in your packet that went out showing the breakdown, the responses of which, option one, which is the renovation, you see 3%, a 3% favorable rating. Option two, renovation addition, a 3%. The new school, option three, was 89.1%. Repair without educational additions was 4.9. And the repair with education came out zero. So your community of 265 people was an 89.1% of people favored to new school. One, the MSBA requires us to go out to the communities, so we were able to do that and go out to the communities. We gave presentations, we announced the presentations in advance through the press. And we also did logo calls out to the Minuteman community inviting them to come. So we did what we think is our very best to try to get out as many people as possible. We had a lot of questions that came up during the process. And what we did is, is that we had the document, we distilled them down to 34 questions and answers which we provided. So there were more than that in questions, but some were duplicative, so we lumped them all together. And we thought that was a pretty good summary of questions and answers that were given. The, on the 11th, you see the minutes which we had to approve at that meeting, we're also going to have to approve, approve immediately following this discussion, the minutes that relate to this subject, because all has to be goes to the MSBA and a report in the next week or two. The minutes are in there, which shows the vote. We will do the same kind of vote that we will do for the regional school committee, which is a roll call vote, asking specific questions that have to be answered the same way that we did it for the building committee. And that vote approved and recommended to the school committee a new building. I would like to make a motion, if I may, Chairman, that...
Go right ahead.
That the school committee approved the recommendation of the school building committee for a preferred schematic option for a new school with design enrollment for 628 students and for the school committee to authorize, Kansas City, USA, the owner's project manager to submit a preferred schematic option accompanying a report to the Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the Massachusetts School Committee no later than June 11, 2015.
You mean the Minuteman School District?
Yes.
You said Massachusetts something, something. You meant the Minuteman School District. Moved in second discussion, Ms. Mingeres.
I'm a little confused on the frequently asked questions. And point one, it states there are two options available, because it's on page 14 of the packet. It says that under chapter 71, et cetera, section 16, D, the district could seek approval from town meetings in all towns, but the approval required in all 16 towns. And then, when you go to page 24, second paragraph, it states, "In the case of a vocational regional school district, if the district agreement so provides or is amended to so provide, such debt may also be incurred if two-thirds of the member towns do not vote disapproval within said 60-day period."
I'm sorry, Ms. Mingeres, where is that second point? Because 24 is actually a motion. Starts with Mr. Fazell and his...
It's the second paragraph.
On which page?
Page 24.
That's the...
It may be two slash four, whose last word?
Oh, I think it's page 33, there's two, section 16. Yes. Oh, the Mass General Law.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, could you start again, because I'm trying to think.
Of course. On that page, the second paragraph, "In the case of a vocational regional high school district, if the district agreement so provides or is amended to so provide, such debt may also be incurred if two-thirds of the member towns do not vote disapproval." I'm not sure why we're saying on page 14 that, or implies that, it should say that it requires a unanimous vote. And on page two slash four, it says it only requires a two-thirds vote of the member towns. Is this specific to vocational regional school districts?
Yes. Ms. Mahoney, action, if that would interest.
This was brought to my attention from some of the questions we received out in the district, and I refer this to Athletics, Attorney Athletics, Murphy, S and T and A. In the language that he quitted in the same paragraph, referring to D, he pointed out that the phrase in the first sentence of that paragraph, "If this district agreement so provides or is amended to so provide," our regional agreement does not provide for that type of two-thirds vote. So since our regional agreement is silent, it differs to the statute.
But since the regional agreement, the current regional unchanged agreement does not speak to voting or proportionment and so forth, then Mass General Law should supersede that be the ruling document.
That's correct.
Yes.
So two-thirds.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
If the regional agreement so provides language to allow us to use the two-thirds provision, then this would apply. But since our regional agreement is silent on specifically allowing us to use two-thirds, it requires unanimous approval. That was the opinion I got back from council.
Hope you want to ask the town council, my town council, to review this.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Horton?
On page 19, item 25, I think it's, maybe your words left out. Why is renovation less expensive than renovation addition, they're already, they're shown, the renovation option is the most expensive. Should it be... Should it be... Which one do you... So should they, should it be, why is renovation more expensive than renovation addition for the heading? I think, I think the renovation, pure renovation is the most expensive.
I think that, so you're looking for typos in the...
The Q and A.
The Q and A, okay. I think that that is something that you brought up afterwards, because it's probably not relevant directly to this vote, although that Q and A sheet is very important.
It's huge people's thinking about, which is whatever.
It has, it has to be fixed. I also found a number of typos in there, but...
I think some more, such as the...
Ms. Mahoney.
I took a look at the vote. Would it be possible to hear from the minority party on the building committee vote about why they stayed voting the way they did?
I think that the, those opinions are probably among the members of this committee as well.
Okay.
I would imagine. And they, we looked at the vote, the result of the vote, and we thought we were going to hear it until we're done.
I was just going to say, I think that that's a very good question.
Ms., is it...
Inte.
Inte, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. My question is in regards to, if we vote on this, or when we vote on this study, where does the regional agreement play into this? Right now, I mean, last meeting, we kind of said we wanted to, I think, my recollection was that we wanted to set the regional agreement aside and work on the building project. That's how I remember it, anyway. So how does the proposed regional agreement impact the school building project?
From the standpoint of our contract with the state, there is no impact. We currently have a regional agreement and that's what we exist under at this moment. When we submit our documents to the MSBA in June 11, that's what the MSBA will receive under this regional agreement. So there is no, no relationship at this point from the state's thinking, I guess, I don't know. But from what our contract is, it doesn't have any bearing whatsoever. We've delayed this vote for several years in order to accommodate some concerns about the regional agreement. And we've been unsuccessful in getting 16 towns to agree to a regional agreement. So this process needs to move forward.
Okay, thank you. And if I can just follow up on that, certainly, I'm sure you can presume that my concern comes from, if we go forward with this project, which I'm in support of, Lincoln is 100% in support of, and we look at the regional agreement, there will need, well, I guess that conversation we have at that time, right? So are we moving forward believing that all of the towns are going to stay, at least at the moment?
Yes. The only town that's voted to withdraw under the current agreement is Wayland, and that process takes several years, I would imagine.
Okay.
And the likelihood of that being approved by all other towns is very slim to nil. I can't, you know, in my report later on, I talk a little bit about the status of the regional agreement, so maybe it'd be more appropriate to have the conversation at that point, if you're up.
Well, yeah, I understand that, just, my concern is how it affects the building project. Not so much concern with the details of the regional agreement at this point, as opposed to, do I need to be mindful of that at this point?
It's a good question, because in, what we've created is a connection between the two.
Right.
Which in practical contractual legal terms is not really there.
Yeah, I do understand that. So it's not like we are suggesting at this point to consider them totally separate at this point. Okay.
Mr. Weiss.
Cheryl already telegraphed this, and as people probably saw, I was the one member of the building committee that was opposed. I know that I'm genuinely loathe to speak publicly here, so I'm glad you proud of me to do this. Here is what my thinking is. Belmont did have a community meeting as well. It was attended by, I don't know, 25-ish, maybe a spigot more people. It was our board of selectmen, all of them, and majorities of our warrant committee, which is in Belmont, our finance committee, and our capital budget committee. And there were also members of the school committee there. During the building committee discussion, I was the, it was suggested that I hijack the presentation. In my view, I think I hewed pretty closely to the presentation, but in my community, since 2010, when the feasibility study came before our community and Belmont voted it down, because there was no agreement on the scope of the project before we started the feasibility study, the issue in my town has been, and it remains, the size of the facility. The, one of the slides that I added to the presentation looked at long-term enrollment at Minuteman. And within the member communities, enrollment of member town students has been plus or minus, very close to 400, for the last 10, 12 years, maybe the longer. I don't have the data in front of me. The concern in my community from the get-go has been, for a district that with its existing membership sends less than 400 students to Minuteman, why do we have to build a school for 628? That's 200 plus more, or 50% larger than what is required for our community. Now Belmont isn't saying we're against the school. Belmont's not even saying, here's the size of the school that we think should exist. What Belmont is saying, and I asked for a show of hands at the end of this presentation, how many people who were at the presentation could support any of the building options? One person raised a hand. How many people thought that there were still critical unanswered strategic questions that needed to be addressed before our community could support the project? The rest of the hands went up. From my perspective, within our community, and again, I'm not advocating for a particular size. And I had this same, many of these comments are the same as I had last June, when this committee approved a 628 student school. Within my community, I don't hear a human cry for multimedia engineering. I have had the conversation with people in our community. We have a horticultural program that serves six member town students and plus or minus 30 non-member students. If we were to eliminate those two programs, the school size could easily be 548. Could we eliminate more programs without jeopardizing programmatic diversity? I don't know. I think we should have the discussion. We haven't had the discussion. We have talked a lot about enrollment and size, but we have always been reacting to numbers that were handed to us. And the debate or the discussion about that has always been within, largely within this body, occasionally within municipal representative breakfasts. But we haven't had a sit-down amongst our member communities to say, what are the trade-offs? What's the difference in cost? What's the difference in programmatic flexibility? Why are we, why this size versus others? There has been none of that back and forth discussion within our communities. Belmont's sole agreement to go forward with the feasibility study was predicated on that discussion and those decisions would be made before we spent any money on the feasibility study. Well, here we are already halfway through our feasibility study money, about to spend money on schematic design, and at least within our community, the people, the key elected and appointed officials are saying, you have not persuaded us that we need to build a school that's 50% larger than what is required to support our member town students. And until we do, until you persuade us, or until we have the dialogue about what's the right-sized facility, the community does not support the current project. We were happy to have a new school. I think when you look at the options that we were presented, as people said at our public hearing, it's compelling that the new school option is correct. The new school alternative of what you're presented is correct. But at least from Belmont's perspective, the choice of 628 or nothing is not a choice that they're willing to accept at this point.
Ms. Mingeres.
I have a rough moral urge for fairness. And I write better than what I speak, because I have the opportunity to sit and write it out and present it and so forth. And I admire my colleague from Belmont being able to speak so well and present the same concerns that I have personally, that my, I believe my town has, as they've added up information. And one of my major concerns with the presentations here, and the options, is that the option to renovate and place is made so abhorrent and distasteful, because it would appear that if that were the selection, that the administration and the building committee would not make an attempt to pursue and reapply for MSBA money. So I can't vote for the choices that are being presented, because I don't think they're fair. I don't think they're fair to my town, I don't think they're fair to our students.
Cheryl, if you wish, granted.
Well, I do want to say totally off the record, I was quite impressed by what the guys put in, in our town. And I thought that my stakeholders had very articulate, precise questions that were answered by the...
Further discussion of the motion on the table. Ms. Shuffler.
I think everyone here knows that Arlington has a particular problem with the regional agreement issue. And I have to say, we, I think, did a very good job presenting the building options in Arlington. And we had, remember the capital planning committee, selectmen, quite a few other influential people in town. There's a lot, a lot of intense pushback about the overall cost. And I was, people reminded me pretty frequently after that, that without a regional agreement, there's going to be a problem for us, without a revised regional agreement. I hate to bring it up now, I know that the building committee has done a tremendous amount of work. I'm also certainly in favor of a new building, no question. But I know that in good conscience, I cannot vote on behalf of my district for this amount of cost. It just won't fly right now. I'm really sorry to have to say that.
Ms. Mingeres.
I would say with all due respect from Lincoln and Arlington, I've been on this committee for seven years, and I've seen, this is the third proposal that I've seen developed here by the administration and others. And the original, they've all been basically rejected because of the, they include subsidies for member towns to pay to reduce their capital costs. And it's plainly that it's the larger towns that are being catered to. And those subsidies that are being presented are being paid by the, by the smaller towns. So I saw a proposal for a thousand student school, a renovated school for 60 million. Then I saw a renovated school for 800 students that cost 100 million. And now we have a school for 628 students that's going to cost, and it does settle between 140 and 160 million dollars, because MSBA does not cover all the costs that are required for a new building. And these, the two lines seem to be going in the opposite direction. The building, a smaller school, the cost keeps pulling up and up. And I think that's what makes, what made the revision big, staple. And I think that's the drive of this position. Thank you.
Ms. Flood.
The question before us tonight is not about how big the school is, or what we teach in the school, or how we divide up the cost of the capital project, but which version, renovation, new construction, renovation and addition, we as a school committee support and feel is the most responsible use of the funds, however the cost is divvied up. And I'd like to focus on that and not the other logs that have been lying in the way for years. We know about them, we've tried to deal with them, we have been frustrated. I personally devoted what probably amounted to, I don't know how many hours, over the course of 18 months, trying to get a regional agreement passed that would satisfy every town. Interestingly, Belmont and Arlington, the larger towns, came to the table. The towns that are now having real trouble accepting it were invited and didn't come to the table. But I'm trying to put that aside and focus on the building and the building project and the most responsible use of our collective resources. And in my mind and in the mind of 89.1% of the people who attended and returned surveys, that's the new construction model.
Mr. Luthar.
I represent one of the smaller communities, but I just remain a strong supporter of Minuteman. The building needs to be renovated. The district owns 100% of the cost of any capital improvements that are made to this building. With an MSBA project, the MSBA picks up 40% minimum of the cost of fixing this building. So fiscally responsible action is to take advantage of that. We are in the process, if we get kicked out of the process, we will have a hard time getting back in line. And the current floor is 31%. So we would be losing, we would be losing some nine points of support for the project. In addition, the longer we wait, the cost will go up. They don't go down. I have a count of costs in building projects going down, anybody recall that? The proposed renovation, oh, sorry, the proposed, not, it's not a renovation, it's a new building. The proposed new building is a 32-month project, it is not an occupied renovation, which means there's less impact on the students. It also means there's less impact on our operating budget, which is actually a longer-term, more expensive thing than a capital project. So with a new building, not an occupied renovation, you can still run the school and attract students while you are building the new building. So that is one of the reasons why, to me, it is what my town members referred to at the town meeting when we talked briefly about this, as a no-brainer. They said, why are we talking about this? It's, on the average house, it is not that much money. And they said, why aren't we just doing this? Why are we waiting? That's the kind of thing I hear in my town. So I just wanted to offer that as a perspective, that it is fiscally responsible, responsible to the students, and it's responsible not just in the capital, but also in the operating budget, which is very, very important.
Ms. Mahoney, under Mr. Horton.
Two points. When Ford came to my town and did the presentation, the stakeholder... When Ford came to my town and did the present, presentation, the stakeholders that were there were able to compartmentalize and analyze this issue alone. There was discussion about the agreement, but at the end of the discussion, they were able to analyze what was being presented that evening, and even though, um, four team members here at the table know it's been an interesting spring at Boxborough, but they were able to set that aside and support the new building based on the analysis that was presented. And also, a, as a side note, this town meeting, we were also presented a proposal for a new public safety building. And to Alice's point, because we don't have any place to put this public safety building, the cost to renovate in place is increased by one-third or one-half. And again, back to the point of it will cause additional time and cost escalations. So that's why, um, my stakeholders supported the new building and not the renovation in place.
Mr. Burton.
It's interesting to me how different, how towns react differently to proposals and what the needs are. I just find it very interesting. Um, uh, we did have the meeting, the information meeting in Lexington, and I didn't accept the questions that came up at the meetings, didn't, uh, either supported or, uh, or rejected a proposal. They were, they were more on technical engineering questions, as I recall. But just for me personally, I, I, as I said to Ford at the beginning of the meeting, before the meeting began, the question and answers, uh, that included in our packet really contained a, a great deal of information, talking about enrollment and how the enrollment of the building could increase, and why it's necessary to have a school of, of a certain, of a certain magnitude, uh, or no, no smaller than, let's say, which would reduce, uh, the number of, of programs that are offered. I think, I think that's very significant. I, I also was impressed by the notion that, um, build, build a new building and they will come. I think, I really think that's going to happen, that will happen. So, great information in the Q and A that, that supports what I've been hearing over the past, what, six or seven years regarding this project. I know we have to separate out the regional agreement, which I haven't, my own thinking, but that's another, another issue. So I, 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 I think there's plenty of reason, uh, and, and to support a, a new building and that, and when the vote comes this evening, that's what I'll vote for.
Mr. Weiss.
Um, three quick, quick points. First, I agree with, um, part of Kerry's say, in terms of separating the regional agreement from the discussion. Um, I disagree on the size. What we are being asked to vote on today is to move forward with the MSBA and spend $400,000 more around, on schematic plans for a particular building. And it seems to me if that building isn't supported within our member communities, that's not a good use of money nor time. Second point, on the issue of if we don't move forward now, we'll lose the 30, uh, 40% MSBA reimbursement. Um, I'm not advocating for a 435 school, but that, this school is 50% larger than that school. Even if we did a school in the 500, that would be 20% smaller than this school. Uh, I think it's reasonable to believe that if we designed and built a smaller school, we might in fact, not only on the capital costs, make up for that 9% delta that we would be foregoing from the MSBA, but on the operating costs, it might be more efficient and we wouldn't have to reach out to as many non-member students as this plan currently relies on. The third, uh, quick point is, there is a question in here, um, that I was intrigued by, um, but I haven't had a chance to explore it. It's counterintuitive to me, um, as I said in the building committee, and that's not to be disrespectful or accusatory to the number, but there's a question, I think it's number 32, I haven't looked at it. It asks, what's the cost of a building that's for 435 students? And the number's something like 137 or 138 million? Is that right? 135.7? It, it's counterintuitive to me. A 435-student school is about 40-plus percent smaller than a 628-student school. That's only a cost savings of 6%. It's counterintuitive to me that we could reduce the size of our school by 40% and only achieve a 6% cost savings. If those numbers are real, I think for my community, that's something that I can use to settle a larger school, but that number hasn't been, at least in my mind, vetted, certainly within people and within my community who are much more knowledgeable about buildings and building cost than I am.
Jennifer Leone. Is it Leone or Leoni?
Leoni.
And welcome.
Um, I think possibly part of what that number is, is not taken into account production and programming. So you still need to have the size, you need the space for even that number of kids that are going to have, continue to have programming requirements, or the program that we have recurrent support. Um, you know, and then I think once you start a building, unless you're going to significantly take out, um, areas of, of stock, space, equipment, the costs are not all that. You add a couple more students, even, even 100, 200, you're not going to get, see the same cost savings. Just, it's on, it's on percentage, I guess.
Mr. Spalding.
I just want to remind the school committee, um, and what most of the building committee understood, we're following an MSBA program, and in order to do that, if, if you do that, you're going to get a 40% reimbursement minimum. If you don't do what they're asking, probably a pretty good chance you're not going to be in the MSBA program. And if you're not in the MSBA program, in order to get back in, after you've been thrown out, I think is improbable action for the next, I'm just guessing, two to five years anyway, and then you get to start all over again. Um, because if you get back in, or in order to get back in, you have to be one of, I believe, how many schools are brought into a major program?
There's 353 communities competing for the same grant program. There are 1,850 schools plus or minus, and K through 12 schools public in, in the state. And there are 15 core projects accepted per year in the pipeline. Minuteman currently is one of that 15. Uh, the MSBA has made it very clear that Minuteman has been working on this a very long time, the feasibility study, the regionalization amendment, um, agreement, and, um, frankly, if you drop out of the program and we don't proceed, you have to get back in line, and one can only imagine whether you would get back into the pipeline or not. There's no guarantee that you would.
So let me, thank you, let me finish. So if we can get back in, whenever that is, reimbursement rate would probably be 31%. I think Alice is correct, building costs are going up, and I see those building costs, uh, going up in my own town with projects that are there. So, second thing I want to point out is, the building committee acted on the school committee vote of 628 students. It is not a building committee decision, shouldn't even be a discussion of the building committee. It's a school committee decision, and the school committee voted 628 students. Whether you like the process of that vote or not is, to me, irrelevant. The vote was made by the majority of the school committee, a large majority, I believe, of the school committee, for 628 students. Um, in terms of the education requirements, uh, I can appreciate some of us wanting to redo the education requirements, however, the school committee voted. So the building committee took the information that was provided by the school committee, and we acted on building, on the, uh, education requirements that came forth. So the votes were all met, whether we liked the procedure for the votes or how it happened, is a little bit irresponsible, it doesn't have any reflection on the building committee's actions. The building committee did what it had to do. The communities, all, uh, 14 of the 15 communities had community meetings. I will tell you, 13 of those communities dealt with the process, which was to select a preferred renovation or, uh, I mean, excuse me, a new building, renovation or new, or renovation only. That's what the presentation was on. Wasn't on school committee issues, it was on that, and I would say of the communities that I went to, and I missed two of the other ones, I missed Bolton and Stowe, I heard from those attendees, the, the recognition, the building needs to be taken care of. And I heard from those communities, for the most part, that it was a new building, and 89% of the respondents said that. It is interesting also to note, and I actually wrote the governor a letter on this, we live in New England, and we have 16 communities who all think of themselves as separate entities, and I heard a lot of different issues. I heard it in Arlington, I heard it in Winston, I heard it in, uh, Lancaster, I heard it in Lincoln, and everybody has their own particular issue. But the important thing is, is we have a project that we need to act on. We have to, we, I would think we want to stay in the MSBA process because I would think money is important, and I heard money was important in every community. So, we need to, to follow that process. We need to come together with some kind of consensus. We have a difficult time in this body coming about consensus, and then, you know, going out to all the communities, it's going to be just as hard. But I'm going to use a silly example with Robert Kraft. Robert Kraft today, he attended an NFL meeting, and he came away and announced they're not going to challenge what the commissioner said. And he did that for one reason, for the good of the league. And I think it's a, a, a same kind of parallel here. We want to do it for the good of the district. What is the right thing to do for the district? Is the right thing to do for the district to walk away from a building project? This is what, in part, I'm hearing. Whether we're going to say yes, walking away, that's what I'm hearing because if we don't answer the MSBA's question of what preferred option you want, and if we don't even come to a large or a 100% feeling of that case, we may be losing out. And if we're losing out in Ford's opinion, you are saying to your individual community, we're willing to pay a lot more for Minuteman, because we're going to pay a lot more, according to the numbers that the building committee turned out, our subcommittee under Dana Hamm, and Dana is here, and thank you for being here, Carmen Reese is also here, uh, thank you for the building committee. Um, and so I think we need to think long and hard. Are we going to sit and just hold fast against the things that, for some reason, maybe correctly so, we think are right? Are we going to follow the MSBA process? And that is, we need to pick a preferred option, and we need to send that to the MSBA, and we need to do that basically by June or July? I think that's the date?
Yes.
And if we don't, we can sit here and we can talk about how much money we want to spend in our.
Sue.
This is probably quite a naive question, but I've only been here less than a year, so I don't know the answer. Um, the costs that are currently projected, do we have any chance to decrease those costs? Decrease what we're actually building through the MSBA process?
I hope so, because I think we're going to have to. As I went out to communities, I think, you know, we're going to have to find ways that we can reduce the cost, but how much? I don't know. Sitting in my own town, we have two projects, one a protective agency building project, another is a community center project, and in both cases, they came back to town meeting asking for more money because they didn't have enough money to complete the job because prices are going up. And I don't think they're the only community that's had that happen.
Thank you for, um, clarifying some of the points that I had known, but sort of hadn't put in together like this. Um, I appreciate that.
Ms. Ngeres.
Thank you. Um, I was asked these same questions within my own town, and then I reiterated to them that the MSBA did a, uh, pretty intensive analysis, demographic analysis of our member towns, there's 60 member towns, and their analysis indicated that their, this district would only provide a maximum of 435 member-town students over the life of the project. Um, I haven't seen anything from them in writing saying that they're, and that's all they're going to pay for, 435 grade nine through 12 students.
Excuse me, if, would you like to repeat so we could all know what you're saying?
His comments are out of order, so I'm listening to Ms. Ngeres, so I'm listening to you right now.
I thought I heard something. I have bad hearing.
No, I've heard something too.
Something?
Why don't you finish and I'll make my comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I've seen, uh, proposals for a thousand-unit student school, which means we'd have to have 665, uh, district tuition students. I've seen proposals for 800 students, you do the math, that's 365, and now we're probably going to have out of 628, they have to have 240 member tuition students. And that's all well and good if they paid everything on an operational basis, but in this coming school year, we're going to have to subsidize those, uh, 300 hub district tuition students with 2.2 million dollars of assessment dollars.
No, excuse me, uh, Ms. Ngeres has the floor, so you can wait.
Oh, no, she has the point order, whether to speak.
I don't believe it's, uh, he has the floor, and what he's doing is legitimate, so.
And I was also asked by my town to calculate what the savings would be if we had a 500-student school, and, um, first of all, the subsidy of 2.2 million dollars would go away, and our current assessments of 10.8 million would be reduced to 8.6 million. If you take out all the tuition students, which is 44% enrollment, then, um, you can reduce your operating costs by approximately 30%, and that's being very, very conservative. Uh, so now we're talking about assessments of about 7.2 million dollars. So there are savings to be had by a smaller school because tuition students are underfunded when they get here. They don't bring any chapter 70 money, they don't make any other contributions to the overall cost, and we have to make up the difference. And as for 435 students, uh, currently, each vocational teacher in the school, on average, has 20 students. That's been the norm for the school for years, it's the norm for nearby peer vocational schools. So if you divide 20 into 435, you come up with about 21 or 22 programs that can be sustained with just member-town enrollment. It's not, uh, recruiting or having to have any subsidized tuition students. Um, I've heard numbers of 40, and I don't think the teachers.
Hey, Ms. Ngeres, please wrap up your comments, you've been talking for quite a while.
Sorry?
Please wrap up your comments, you've been talking for quite a while.
Thank you for your interaction.
You're welcome.
So I, I think that, um, there are cost savings to be had, we can do it with our own students, we can sprinkle in tuition students as we need to fill empty seats in classrooms that are already near capacity with member-town students, and, um, there's a lot of savings to be had. Thank you very much.
May I be next, please?
Absolutely.
I have to correct some, for the new members especially, some of the comments of Mr. Ngeres are just blatantly incorrect. When, uh, the MSBA enrollment study was done back in 2009, and if you're not familiar with the process, you submit a statement of interest, then, um, the MSBA reviews your statement of interest and they invite you into the process. One of the first things that's done in the process is the establishment of a design enrollment. When we were first invited into the process in 2009, our design enrollment given to us by the MSBA was for 800 students. It was that 800-student number that developed the budget for a feasibility study. That budget for a feasibility study was eventually approved by all 16 communities. Subsequent, after that approval by all 16 communities, the MSBA added another enrollment design. design number to our feasibility study of four hundred and thirty-five. We instructed the design team to create a preliminary design program submission that was submitted last November for four, three models for four thirty-five, three models for eight hundred, and one repair-only option. I've never seen a proposal for a thousand students, there never has been one from this administration, and we have been able, thanks to the participation and generosity of Castle Booze and Skanska, been able to perform in accord with the contract the district has within the budget we have. And I appreciate Skanska and KBA doing that. But I need to clarify those misstatements. Your other misstatements, I will leave for another meeting.
Mr. Weiss and then Mr. Horton. Not to get into the disagreement over history, but I have to correct our superintendent on the history, and this is important, or the reason I know is because, um, I transitioned onto the school committee during this process. In the spring of two thousand and ten, our towns were asked to approve a bond issuance of roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support a feasibility study. There was no super school size associated with that request. In the spring of two thousand and eleven, one of the first steps of that feasibility study is to submit a design enrollment. The enrollment study that this district had, from this consulting firm, Nesdeck, recommended a student, a school size of eleven hundred students. The MSBA came back, it is absolutely true, I'll be happy to share supporting document, the MSBA came back and said, no, eight hundred.
Up to eight.
Up to eight hundred. So, uh, just in terms of the sequence, Minuteman was the one, with no debate and discussion amongst this committee, approved an enrollment study recommending a school of eleven hundred, uh, that the school, uh, that the MSBA subsequently rejected.
I, I disagree with you, but we can, um, look at the documents, because I have it on my desk today and I was reading it. It was a capacity study done on the existing building, it was not an enrollment study submitted to MSBA. Mr. Horton.
I'd just like to, to add that I wish I had spoken as eloquently, eloquently as Ford about the process, uh, and I do agree and support everything that he has said about the process that we have gone through, back to this point. Talking, I, I just want to make a further point about one of the important accomplishments of the administration is item thirty under the Q and A about to, what will their, what will be their capital assessment and why for out-of-district students, the fact that we achieved that, that the DSC is now, has, has, has said that out-of-district students can be charged capital costs for renovation building projects. And also what we, what could, what may be yielded by the intermunicipal agreements, as far as what they're going to be, what they will be charged and paid for. Just, but I'd like to do just one more statement. I don't, I don't want to be on a, on a school, on this school committee that folks be known as the school committee, a member of the school committee that said voted against any of these choices. Because what we're saying to the communities are, you're gonna have to, to our communities, collectively and individually, you're gonna be have, you will have to live with a, with a building that doesn't need programmatic needs, or student needs, or, or, um, financial needs, if you, if you wish. And to be known as, we were the committee that said, that said, no, okay, communities, now you're, you're stuck with this building with no support from MSBA, I think that is certainly a very difficult thing for us to live with if we, if we go that way.
Ms. Flood.
Uh, my earlier comments, I said I wanted us to, to focus on the building project. With respect, however, sidelined to future enrollment, I think that if this school committee isn't seen in the public, in the greater public, in the greater community, as supporting the best interests of the students in this school, um, the physical condition of the building, but also the academic program and the space in which they will learn and prepare for their work lives, well, how can we ask our communities to support or make a decision? We have to take the lead in that. We're the ones with the responsibility, we're the ones who accepted that responsibility when we accepted the seat on the school committee. And I think of all of the things that I've done in three and a half years here, this is the most important vote that I have taken, or that I will take in the rest of my career.
Mr. Luca.
Um, I'm gonna follow what Dave and Carrie said, and try to raise this discussion out of the, out of the arguments over numbers of students, and talk a little bit about Minuteman itself as a point of pride. It is a point of pride of our communities, it is a point of pride for the students who come here, they want to come to Minuteman, they know about Minuteman. Minuteman, um, has a reputation both in the state and also nationally, it is a school that sort of plants a seed in other parts of the country, when people hear about the things that happen here, they wanna know, why don't we have Minuteman here? How can we make a Minuteman happen in our state, in our state that doesn't have this type of vocational education? It is one of the, uh, school districts which was considered by the Pioneer Institute to be, um, one of the best school districts in the state, and they're, and they are not, you know, usually the kind of, uh, group that puts that kind of report forward, but they noted the vocational schools as being a pathway to prosperity for the students of the state of Massachusetts. We, as a school district of sixteen relatively affluent communities, have, um, the honor of being associated with this school, uh, Minuteman with its reputation, Minuteman which had the first biotechnology, um, program, was it the first in the country, or was it the second? Do you guys remember?
I think it was the first.
Yeah, so it, it is, it's always the first, and one of the first that we can do would be to be one of the large vocational school districts that actually manages to fix their school. These schools were all built in the seventies, and the very large regional vocational school districts are all facing the same problem. Minuteman should be the first here, too. Minuteman should be the one that shows the way. It can be done, this district can come together and they can do the right thing for the students and for the school district, and retain a point of pride, not just let it crumble.
Ms. Mahoney.
Um, one point I made at our building presentation was to bring up Worcester. And, uh, what I pointed out is, look at the amazing things that Worcester was able to do with a new building. I also pointed out, Minuteman is also doing the same amazing things in this decrep, decrepit, degraded, dysfunctional facility. So just imagine what we could do, Alice's point, what we could accomplish if we had the facility that was worthy of what people are committed to providing in this building. And the other point, and you may remember this, Ford, the one big finger wag that we got at our presentation, is our selectmen said, shame on you, school committee. Shame on you for letting this building get to the condition that it is. And we need to do something. We need to do something so these kids have a building worthy of the commitment they've made.
Ms. Antia.
Did I get it right? Antia, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Um, I am stymied as to why this is going on as long as it is, because as far as I know, what we're supposed to be voting on is three building choices. If we all agree, we need to do something. The numbers, the paying, I mean, all of that, if we agree we need to move forward, doesn't the rest of, of that all come together as we move along? I'm, I'm really confused as to why we're worried about if it's how many students or et cetera. It's a matter of which, which, which plan we need to go with or not.
Just a point of information, I, I think if we go forward, we are going forward at a six hundred and twenty-eight student school. We are gonna enter into a phase that starts to do detailed architectural drawings around a six hundred and twenty-eight student school. So this is the point in the path where you can't say, you know what, folks, maybe we should do five fifty instead. And that, I think, is my community's point. We should have that discussion around what is the right-sized facility to serve this district for the next forty years before we go spend four hundred thousand dollars on detailed architectural plans around the size of a school that will be fixed at six twenty-eight going forward.
Didn't we already have that discussion, to come up with the six hundred and twenty-eight? Well, yeah, uh, okay, I'm gonna make a comment now, that I have a few more people want to talk. The first comment I'm gonna make is, I'm not gonna cut this discussion short, because it's very important, just looking at the clock, just reminding you, whatever, but I'm gonna make a prediction. Okay, here's the prediction. Uh, before I make the prediction, I want to make a statement that every size school has risks for us. A four-twenty-eight school size would have risks both educationally and financially, five-twenty-eight has risks, six-twenty-eight has risks, seven-twenty-eight has risks, all those sizes have risks. Now, some people who are conservative believe that if you build a school to the size of the population you currently have, you have the least amount of risk. That's incorrect. I believe that as we move forward in this process, and we discuss it more, we're gonna find that, uh, the six-twenty-eight school is the one with the least amount of risk, and the best outcome, both financially and educationally. Even for Arlington, the six-twenty-eight school, moving forward with the six-twenty-eight school is the least expensive, short-term and long-term option we've come up with. Now, some, not everybody's convinced of that, and we have some more discussion to do on. And you've heard of the strong, uh, the, um, all the reasonable issues being brought up. So I consider this a very good discussion, because the key issues were brought up. Um, I believe I understand what the outcome's gonna be after we discuss a few of these issues a little bit further. All school sizes have risks, educational risk and financial risk. Six-twenty-eight is gonna end up being the size that has the best combination of those, and if we are able to move forward in one year on a school of six-twenty-eight, it's gonna be the least expensive in the member towns and district, in both the short-term and the long-term. Every other approach, every other path we can take is gonna be far more expensive and end up with a school which is educationally inferior.
Uh, Mr. Ford and then Ms. Najeres.
I, I just need to go back, what the process is. We are, the building committee is recommending to you again, you have a new building, for six hundred and twenty-eight students, we are honoring the vote of the school committee. And as I recall, the school committee had two votes against that. We had, we are honoring the vote of the school committee on the education plan. And as I recall, there were about four, maybe five votes against that. It's the majority rules, that's what we carry, that's what this government's about, that's what happens in Washington, DC, which maybe is, maybe we are, maybe we sort of look like Washington, DC, quite frankly. Um, and I think we need to pay attention to what we're doing here. We're honoring a process to go forward. If you all, as a school committee, decide you want to change the enrollment later on, go for it. But we are honoring the vote of the school committee, and we sit here and we try to change that vote. That's not the motion. I think we have to stick to the motion, and the motion is, is which of the three options are we gonna recommend to the NSBA?
Ms. Najeres, you have your turn.
Thank you. Um, all of the statements I made, I can back up with documentation, since they've been discussed within the open forum, I will send that to each member of the school committee, including the four thirty-five.
Please, please, don't bother.
Okay, thank you. Um, but I think that what's taking place here is that I think there's a, there's an attempt to create discourse and set the table for a nuclear option of a, a public vote among solid member towns.
That would be beyond the scope of this discussion, and probably something we may be discussing in a later agenda, I think.
Really? Okay, well, I thought it was amongst the documents that we received.
True, but it's not part of this option. This option only has to do with this vote, it is certainly something in there in our packet, but it is not in the forecourters of the item that we're under discussion.
Okay. Anyway, I'm gonna send the documentation to everyone.
Uh, once again, some of the members have said that they're not interested in receiving this, so I think that it was wise to take it.
Send it to the list, that is the district.
Right. Yeah, but people don't want to get it, so. Uh, Ms. Spalding.
Um, I'd like to make one more plea. The plea is for the kids, kids that come here and got a great education, and I'd like to also make a plea for the faculty that educate them. We haven't spent much time talking about them in this debate, nor in a lot of other debates, but we're here for one reason, is to support the education that our faculty can give to our students, so they can go out and succeed. I've had the opportunity to get to know several students, and I gotta tell you, they love this school, they love what the faculty is doing, and when they find out that I'm on the building committee, they say, I hope you're doing something about it. So I think we ought to stop for a minute and not just think about what our selectmen want, or what this person wants, or what, what do we as individuals on the Minuteman school committee think is the best thing to do for our students, future students, and the faculty that are here? I believe the most important thing we can do is to support the vote of the building committee, move forward on a positive basis, one hundred percent of us, move forward on a positive basis to the NSBA. To not do that has repercussions that I'm not sure we're really focusing on. Thank you.
I believe it is now time for the vote. Now, this vote is a roll-call vote, and I have in front of me a very official looking form, that I have to fill out accurately as we vote.
Maybe she'll get to this.
She has a copy of it, too.
MSBA created.
So the way that we're gonna proceed is, I'm going to call everybody's name, and when I call your name, you have three choices. Well, these threes are on the sheet. Well, you can't, uh, first of all, to, to make this a little bit quicker, any school committee members who are absent, please raise your hand, so I can mark you as such. My actual, the three options that they can choose is a fourth if you're not here. Um, my only question, though, is, I assume that since there is no current, um, listed school committee member for Acton, I don't mark that blind at all, because they're not really absent, they're just, no, they're basically, right, there's no call for Acton. So the three possibilities are in favor of the motion at the table, opposed, or abstaining. So when I call your name, uh, you can just say either in favor, opposed, or abstained. And this form is so official, I'm gonna have the vice chair watch me mark each box to keep me honest.
Liz is gonna do it.
What was that?
Liz is gonna do it as well.
I would like Liz to do it as well, so we can compare it again, make sure we got it right. Yes?
Just the wording of the motion doesn't actually identify which, um, building options we're voting on.
Yes, I believe that it does.
Prefer a schematic option of a new school.
Oh, a new school, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll read it again. If the school committee approved the recommendation of the school building committee for a preferred schematic option for a new school with a design enrollment of six twenty-eight, and for the school committee to authorize Skanska USA, the owner's project manager, to submit the preferred schematic option and accompanying report to the Massachusetts Building Authority no later than June eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, and I left out five words because Jeff was pulling it away.
So in favor, opposed, or abstained, and we'll go with the order of the names of this list. So Sue Scheffler of Arlington.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you.
Did you do that right? Uh, Jack Weiss from Bell Hall.
Can I come back?
Yes. Uh, David O'Connor from Bolton.
He's absent.
He says he's dead.
Absent.
He's speaking through.
I, I am a teacher, and I do that every once in a while, I say, if all students were absent, raise your hands, I can take attendance, and they think about it for me. Right.
Such a hard.
Cheryl Mahoney of Oxford.
In favor.
Judith Taylor of Carlisle.
In favor.
Carrie Flood of Concord.
In favor.
Ford Spalding Dover.
In favor.
Jennifer Leone Lancaster.
Leone.
Leone.
In favor.
I'll get it within a month or two, I promise. David Horton Lexington.
In favor.
Sharon Antill Lincoln.
In favor.
Jeffrey Stuhl of Needham.
In favor.
Alice DeLuca Stubbs.
In favor.
David Mingeres Sudbury.
Sudbury, opposed.
Mary Ellen Castagna Whalen.
I want to pass. I wanted to see him, but Mr. ...
Are you abstaining, Jesus?
No, I want to pass.
Douglas Gillespie Weston.
In favor.
Jack Weiss Belmont.
I am, just wanted to comment. I hear the comment about building support and agreeing with the majority, so I want to believe that this project can be convinced and might support it in my community. Don't think that support is there, and unlike some how people have characterized the role, I think I represent my town, I'm going to oppose.
Mary Ellen Castagna Whalen.
I oppose.
I believe I have called everybody, and I'm gonna tally it up. I teach math, so this may take a long time.
Fifteen, one absent, more than, yes, okay.
So the final tally, and Liz, you'll verify this. Eleven in favor, three opposed, one absent. The motion passes. Mrs. Spalding, would you like to change your vote?
I'm gonna make another motion.
Oh, okay.
As we did in the building committee, because we need by June 11th to provide minutes of this part of the meeting, we really need to approve the minutes. What we did is, is we had the recorder tell us what E, in that case, P, is put in the minutes, and it's not necessarily verbatim, but it is, gets the job done. If you want it verbatim, then we could ask Liz who's doing this to leave the room, and maybe Carrie or somebody could take minutes for the rest of the meeting while she types it up. But my recommendation is, is you take what she says, what Liz says is gonna be the minutes that she should submit, and I would suggest that we then vote on it. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the secretary and the coordinator to finalize as approved the open session minutes of 5:1915 so they could be certified and included with a submission to the NSBA.
Discussion.
Liz needs to tell us what she's gonna say.
I just have a question. Is it just the minutes related to this?
Liz.
Well, in the past, we had to do this once before, and what we did was the secretary and I worked on the minutes, and the school committee supported them to be approved when they were approved.
Discussion of the motion at the table. Mr. Weiss.
I'm not an expert on open meeting law, I'm not an expert on protocol. I approve the process that Ford just laid out in the building committee, and I'm happy to do that if that's our only alternative. But is there an alternative where Liz presents something, distributes it electronically, and we weigh back in with comments, and if there are edits or revise that gets distributed?
The only alternative I can see is if I call a special meeting, we have another funded dinner. Cheryl.
My understanding is if someone submits to the officers that they wish to make material changes, two minutes at some point, minutes can be reopened, and the committee can discuss those revisions at a later date.
No, because we don't have, no, I, I think that the important thing here is to do the bureaucratic stuff that needs to be done, send us to the NSBA. If later there are errors in the minutes beyond, you know, this section here, then we can reopen and get later on if there's significant, I believe that we can do that.
Am I correct that the minutes don't need to even have, these minutes for the purpose they will be used, don't have to have a summary, the conversation is just, the motion was made, discussion took place, the committee voted, and here's the results of the vote?
Correct.
Right? So I don't think anybody has to really go away to write that. We all agree that the vote was taken, and the motion was written and ready.
I think Carrie's right. If it would appease or please, is probably a better word, some of the people, we would say there was a discussion around the building project, but the vote was.
Seem now for a discussion for the motion at the table? All in favor of the motion at the table, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve in favor, opposed, and abstentions, two abstentions, the motion carries. Mr. Spalding, yet another motion.
I'd sort of like to end this and just say, I wanna thank everybody for this. I think it's extremely important, what we've just done. I remain extremely concerned about the NSBA approving us moving forward, but I think it's to the benefit of students, future students, the faculty, and every one of our communities that we do move forward, so thank you.
Very good. Public comment, anybody for a public comment? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir. So please have a seat, identify yourself, and we allow three minutes. I don't have any words, I know, so I'm sure it's gonna be less than that, I'm not even trying to count them.
My name is Bob McLaughlin. I'm on the water committee, no one. I served with Carrie on the RAS committee, we're the same eighteen months, I never missed a meeting. I served on the committee to draft the campus to be in this of the agreement. And I come here tonight, and I say it's a sad day for this district, and it's a sad meeting for Belmont. Jack kinda gave the history. We were promised when we didn't vote to disapprove of 750,000 dollars, that the first order of business would be to agree upon the enrollment. That pledge was broken by this administration. We had lawyers writing letters back and forth and so forth. We acquiesced until we got to this point, when we're about to spend another $400,000 at this preferred section, and you've just gone ahead and made it officially, you've steamed ahead. We had no part of the process. The fact that Ford Spalding came out with these three alternatives, and I'm the one who said it at the meeting, Jack, you had to be praying yet not to pick the new agreement. But that's when it was all done, it was all done, we were just no part of it. So you're gonna go steaming ahead. 628, I think it's 383 member students here now, and I've heard that when they build it, they will come. Well, I think exactly the opposite. When the various towns realize with not only the operating cost, but also the new debt cost of $144 million, $144.9, they aren't gonna send students, they're not gonna recruit, they're not gonna let you make a pitch. I think there's gonna be less students. Now, also in the packet, which I reviewed today, I see that DESE has come up with a new regulation in February. They're not gonna let out-of-district students in the ninth grade participate in an exploratory program. That's gonna further diminish your ability to have it grow, so that it is just, in my humble judgment, a disaster. And I say to you, if we all sat around this table and there was no district, and we said, gee, you know, we have 383 students in these sixteen towns, let's put them all together, considering their geography, their demographics, and let's weld them into the most inflexible agreement that we could possibly imagine, and let's build a school up there in Lexington and in Lincoln. We should have a heads exam. What would we have done if that was the situation? First off, we'd build a school somewhere down near the Airway Brook Station, where we would have Cambridge and Somerville and Medford and Belmont and Lexington and Arlington are right there, and not far from Watertown and Walton. And if the other outline towns wanted to join fun, but that's where this school should be. But no, you're steamed ahead. And so what's gonna happen? I say, you have wasted six years by just steaming ahead, trying to say there's no other way but to build this school and keep this district as it is constituted, and spend $144 million and reindorse that, same procedure, and you're about to waste another four years because you're not gonna get unanimous consent of sixteen towns, I could be rooting for that, and then you're gonna do the nuclear option. And to me, that is a lose-lose, I think you lose. But if you win, you've accomplished a shotgun marriage, you'll have the most dysfunctional and disgruntled group, it is an absolute disaster. And, you know, Belmont should not be considered the pariah in this, as I'm sure those of many of you who try to paint us. We were crawling in the wilderness, start with enrollment and have a consensus of all the towns before you get this far along. So how do I view Belmont? I view Belmont as not one of the lemmings rushing for the cliff. Good luck.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, in the back, please, not you, Mr. Mingeres. Please state your name, and where you're from, and three minutes.
I'm Deanne Dupont from the town of Arlington. I wish to copy my statement to be included in the minutes of tonight's school committee meeting. Since there was no public comment before the vote for the building, I realize that my comments will have no impact, but I wanted to share them with you anyway. The information that I have sent around was from the presentation in October 2013. After requesting several times from building committee members for similar information for the proposed 628-student school and not receiving the information, it appears to me that no one on the building committee was provided similar information for the 628 school, and was not provided details on the drastic change in costs and the flip of what the least expensive option would be. I find it difficult to believe that the renovation add-on would cost significantly more than a new school, particularly when it was less expensive for an 800-student school in October of 2013. There is always an allure to something new. Errors are made in calculations, I've seen errors made by big four accounting firms that went through several layers of reviews. The building committee members could not provide supporting information to demonstrate the reason for the flip in costs and the cost drivers for the option of a new school. During the building meeting in Arlington, we were advised that we could complete the survey online. However, one could not easily find the link to this on the Minuteman High School website. After much searching, I requested info on how to get to the survey, and it was sent to me, but the person who sent it failed to inform me that the cutoff was only hours away, and I needed to complete it immediately. I want to have on record that at the Arlington building meeting, we were assured by Dr. Buquillan and Mr. Ford that the allowance for the site improvements would cover all costs for all of the new athletic fields that would be displaced by a new building, and there would be no additional cost for these, for the town's capital cost. We were also advised that the existing building would be demolished and that there would be no longer swimming facilities here at Minuteman. I extrapolate from this information that the school would be less desirable for summer camps since the swimming pool is a large draw for camps. The building and school committee had to make their decisions before they were advised of the annual operating costs for the various scenarios. We were advised at the Arlington building meeting that these would not be available to the building and school committees until after the vote was taken tonight. In my opinion, the school committee has had to make a decision without all of the necessary information and details to make a fully informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Yes. Your name and community, please.
Julie Crimber from Arlington. I would also like my comments included in the minutes, please. I also feel that from the beginning, this project has sort of been a steamroller. Any presentation that I saw at the school, the discussion was always, we are building a new school, not how possibly we could renovate, I mean, the options were there, but the discussion was very negative regarding renovation or having the addition put on during the renovation. Yes, it's understandable it would take longer, but the new schools that I've been a part of over the course of my children's school years, none of the new buildings have the amount of storage or utilitarian space available as the old-school buildings had. You lose a lot of square footage, basically, and I think a lot of people don't understand that when they just see new building idea and how much it would cost. There's a lot of space in the school that could be used in a better way. I'm sure there are a lot of architects who would love the challenge of making this a great place. It is important, and I don't hear a lot of discussion about it either, that the faculty and the curriculum be on a much higher plane for people to talk about. It's not just a building, it's what goes on in the building, it's the students, it's the teachers. That's what makes people come to the school. And I think Minuteman has a pretty good record in the past. I think Minuteman can be even better going forward, and I'd like to see that happen. I, too, don't wanna see the pool being lost, I don't wanna see the woods being lost or the fields. And at one point in the discussion, one of the presentations, they did not say that this old building would be demolished. There was even some discussion of the old building being taken care of by the state, that it could either be sold or reused or something else. So then I have the concern, if this building is used for a private business or corporation, would we then have strangers on the campus, which would make the school much less safe for our students? So I think there's a lot of things that people aren't thinking about, mostly it's just the idea of a brand-new school, and that's how it's been proposed from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mingeres.
Mr. Mingeres Sudbury. This is a little backstory on this thing. I had sent a request in writing to the school committee officers requesting that they release unredacted copies of the contract in the investigative report done by the Abraham's Group two, three years ago. And I got a letter back from the school's attorney saying, "No, you're not gonna get it, you can't have it." So that's what we picked up. It would be in the best interest, it would not be in the best interest of the town of Sudbury or the public to accept the terms in the attached letter you sent me. Falconian charges for copies and reductions of public documents have been nothing more than artificial barriers to withhold information of public concern. These documents have been withheld by the Minuteman School Committee for almost three years. The purpose for withholding the documents has been satisfied. I find it strange that the same attorney group that outlined withholding of these requested documents during the investigation, and knowing the purpose of their numerous executive sessions, has been satisfied, now persist in withholding the same documents based on national law that has been tested and found to be superseded by public concerns and case law. This creates the appearance of an ethical conflict of interest. My request for unredacted copies of the documents is supported by open meeting determinations and Massachusetts case law decisions. If I receive the negative or no response to this final request for unredacted documents of the Abraham's Group contract and exploratory documents related to procurement violations described in the attached letter and my previous emails, or I do not receive a plan by the Minuteman School Committee to provide unredacted copies of the requested documents in a reasonable time, I will be left with no alternatives other than to file an open meeting law complaint as well as a public records appeal for the requested unredacted documents. as well as a public records appeal for the requested unredacted documents.
Any further public comments? Very good. Student report.
No.
I hope she's, has she seen that? Okay, so she's out doing her last homework. As you may be aware, we currently don't have a secretary for this committee. We have a reorganizational meeting in July. In the meantime, I think we'll motion.
I'm going to move that David Horton, the appointed interim secretary of the Minuteman Regional High School Committee, the High School Committee. This appointment is valid until a secretary is elected at the July two thousand and fifteen School Committee Officer elections.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mary Ellen.
Is that okay with you?
Mr. Weiss.
David, based on your comments on minutes, I can see you think of no person in this committee who is more well-suited to that role than you are. I'm thrilled that you're willing to take it on.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion on the table? Uh, it'd be one, two, three, four, five, six. Thirteen opposed, and abstentions. One abstention. Very good. And Fort Spalding, would you like to make his next motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sharon Anita as a member of the school committee's communications secretary.
We have a second. Any discussion? Yes. Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What exactly does this mean? Don't worry, you don't have to do anything.
What it's going to mean is, is we're gonna have a building project. From a building point of view, we have a building project. We need to have it approved in all of our communities. We need to communicate through all of our communities, starting today, about the project, about what our needs are. And then, as we get closer to town meeting, what the proposed motion will be for town meetings and what the project will be. So that is, from the building committee's point of view, you will be the point for the building committee has a committee, the school committee has a committee.
I'd ask what the committee is. I don't think I wanna know.
It doubles your school committee's.
Thank you very much, Chair Person. Okay, so I'll be working closely with you, presumably, with your committee.
Yep.
And are there any other responsibilities of the communications person?
It is up right now.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Any other comments on the motion on the table?
I have one. Were you aware of this, please?
I was, yes.
All in favor of motion on the table, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much for taking on that responsibility as a new member especially. Update on membership terms and manuals. Let's see now, I've been new, so I'm off the list. We have a happy to say a new member from Leam Caster, Jennifer Leomond. And we have our new member from Lincoln, which we mentioned last time, and we're still missing, I think that we have somebody new from Acton, but not.
Yes, town moderator and I met this morning with his appointee. Will be sworn in next, sometime this week or next week. She intends to be at the May twenty-sixth opening workshop.
Anything else pending?
Do the manuals know who they are?
I think all the manuals have been notified, is that correct?
The manuals know who they are.
Yeah. Would you like to say something, or are you all set?
There's more to talk.
Okay, more to talk. Great, thank you. So we have two more new members. We're very, very happy that you've joined us.
There's something that's been leaving.
Superintendent's report. And go.
In your packet is a listing of the new advisory committee members. Just for your information, a great group of folks that staff have worked very hard on getting all advisory committees active and including new members on a consistent basis, so we always have new blood. Town meeting articles update. This is an update on the Minuteman Town Meeting articles. Fourteen of the sixteen communities have approved our budget. So we have a budget. The towns remaining are Bolton and Belmont. Bolton is having, I believe, a special town meeting on June to pass their budgets. And Belmont, I believe, is around the first of June. In regards to the articles that were on the warrants for the regional agreement of the six communities, I had my little cheat sheet here and I lost it. Lincoln voted to pass over. Whalen withdrew our amendment and didn't vote on it. And all the other.
Excuse me, we voted on it the prior year, and you voted it down.
You still withdrew our agreement, our article. It was withdrawn from the warrant after the school committee had requested it.
I was presenting that, the school committee did not request it.
Yes, we did.
No, it didn't. You showed me in writing when you proposed it.
Okay. Could you make that note before we could send Mary Ellen?
It was requested by a town administrator and by a board of selectmen, and it hasn't come. It was not requested by you.
I will send you the documentation. I will, I'll be glad to. The other communities that have voted on it and voted to pass over it, Belmont, this town meeting hasn't even been done yet, so they're the last community to act upon it. Review of options under Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen. In your packet, we've had some preliminary discussions about the options available, and there's been some discussion earlier this evening about it. I put that on here to kind of get us in the mood to talk about it for June. We've had various assessments of our ability to succeed in both of these options. As superintendent, what I've committed to is to try and mitigate the risks of losing the state funding for this project that is still moving forward. And in that light, when we had Ed Lennox here, he did explain at a very brief level how the mechanics of that works. I also would like the school committee to discuss it at greater length at the next meeting, because there are some, I think, extenuating circumstances that are facing the district that have been articulated in very different ways. But I would appreciate the school committee taking a reasoned discussion of the options available so that we understand what they are, not necessarily to vote on doing anything yet, but that we understand what those options are under the law. That's all I want to say about them.
Comment from Mr. Weiss.
Thankful that we'll talk about this in June. Jeff, you tell me if this is out of order, but in looking at this package, I wanted to address a comment that Dave made about the unanimity versus the two-thirds majority. If you look at the top of page thirty-four of the school committee package, which is two slash four of the general laws handout, the very top. And this is the process that was followed for the feasibility study in Arlington. School committee votes, and you have that sixty-day period, and pick up and provide it further before the expiration of that sixty-day period, any member town of the regional district may hold a town meeting for the purpose of expressing disapproval of the amount of debt authorized. And if at that town meeting, a majority, so a simple majority of the voters present express disapproval, the debt shall not be incurred, and the district school committee shall prepare the proposal. That's where the unanimity, if you follow the town meeting process, is spelled out. Just a point of clarification for your earlier comment question.
And item D.
In your packet, I have a request and a letter that I'd like the school committee to consider. As was mentioned earlier, the regulatory changes made by the Department of Education in February that went into effect March twenty-seventh and are really gonna impact us next year, are really impacting our mission to serve young people. They hold students hostage in their hometowns for their entire freshman year, even if they are, even if the program that they want is not in their hometown. I voiced my strong objections to this change. I've testified twice in front of the Board of Education, and I fought this battle fairly much alone. I believe that it is a violation of civil rights. There are some families that are very upset with this and are talking to attorneys, but we're not involved in those discussions at all. But when we look at what high-quality Chapter seventy-four vocational education is providing, we find that students who are exploring in the ninth grade connect with the school regardless of what kind of a program they choose. And we find that the likelihood of a student arriving, coming to Minuteman and applying as a tenth grader, which the law allows for and actually describes, is highly unlikely, and that's, these students would be being denied access to the programs of their choice. And I have a letter there that you can read, and then we have some references there. We also had a student, Alice Afria, writing a letter to the chairman of the Board of Ed, which she came up with, and it's really, there are different ways to get done than what I think they're trying to get done.
So you're asking for a specific vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's put the vote on the table, and then we'll start discussing.
Second.
That would be the vote under item ID of seven. I think you should.
For the public, then what this vote says is to urge the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to rescind the regulation on ninth-grade exploratory programs.
Okay, it's been moved. Is your second? Yes, Ms. Spalding.
We saw, officers saw a copy of Mr. Afria's letter at a planning meeting a couple of weeks ago. I was just so totally impressed by this letter. And I don't think that there's anything that any one of us individually or collectively could say that would make a better point as to why this regulation change is a wrong one. But nevertheless, I think we can, I think we're obliged to support it for exactly what this woman has been able to accomplish coming out of Minuteman. It is why we are here, and I was very proud to read it.
Mr. Weiss.
Can I ask a procedural question, and then after that, make a substantive comment?
Ask away.
The procedural question is, in what form or fashion does this urgent take place? Are we going to review whatever that letter is? Or are we granting here unilateral authority for somebody to send some sort of communication out under our collective signatures? What's the process or the procedure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman can determine that procedure. I would suggest that, as we've done in the past, that the administration and the officers collaborate on a, agree upon a final letter that's sent. We've done that several times in the past.
Would you bring this letter to a vote of the school committee in our next meeting, or would you need, for some reason, to get it out earlier than that?
We could bring it back to a subsequent meeting. I don't think there's any need to get it out before, well, reading it again next week.
Yeah, the meeting can only have the workshop. Ms. Antiana.
Oh, did I make my substantive comment?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
On one level, I do understand the request and the issue here. But, and I do understand why it would impact our school. But on another level, and I think I've made this comment before, the reason why we care about this is because we are so reliant on out-of-district students. And from my perspective, what I believe my duty is as a school committee member is to represent the interests of my community's students and the district. And I'm frankly agnostic as to whether or not if communities who aren't part of our district want to resist letting their students come to Minuteman for an exploratory program, frankly don't think it's our duty to wade into that battle. That's their choice as municipalities. I recognize what the impact would be, and I recognize why it's harmful to us because we're so reliant on those tuition students. But frankly, I think it's the choice of the Medfords and the Walpims and the Cambridges as to how they want to serve their own community. And if they want to deny their students the opportunity to come to Minuteman for an exploratory program, I don't think it's our position to, it's appropriate for us to wade into that debate and try to persuade them that what they're doing for their own community is incorrect.
I do have a comment here. As an educator in high school now for about fifteen years, we all know that teenagers sometimes have difficulty making a decision beyond my friends or whatever. And there can be a huge difference in educational outcome for a teenager if they're in the right program versus the wrong program. I see this all the time. And I see a number of students at Newton-South where I teach who are not in an environment which is the best for them. And they don't do very well at the school. Whereas if they had the opportunity, they were encouraged to come to a place like this, then a number of them would become superstars. They go from what is considered to be failures to superstars. And this law is an effort to block that opportunity for students, which will, for many students, result in a highly inferior, not for all of them, obviously, but for some of them, a highly inferior educational outcome. Now, it is not my job as a school committee member to care about any of the students in another community. Nevertheless, my moral compass as an educator says that this is an opportunity that should be made available to allow them to go, many of them from a failed education to a successful education. Again, not all of them. And my primary concern is not the benefit of Minuteman, but the educational policy of giving kids an opportunity that they need. Because I see, you know, one of the best high schools in the state, and I see kids who fail there not because they're dumb, not because they're bad kids, but because they're not in the right place for them, and they're ignorant about or, because of ideological reasons, not given the opportunity to seriously look at an alternative which would transform their life. And so that's my reason for doing this. It's not the obvious benefit to Minuteman, which, you know, in the long term, we may not care about that, I'm hoping. It is the public policy of, there's a reason that Chapter seventy-four lies here. There's a reason we allow people to go out of district. And I'm a little tired of artificial barriers being put off to deny opportunities to children, which are gonna cost us a lot, in my opinion. So that's my position there. I think we're gonna go to, we're going around this way, there's so many people. Hands up. Ms. Antiana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Person. What you said, that was more or less what I was gonna say. It's the policy, whether or not it benefits Minuteman, it's a bad policy. And as educators, I think it's our responsibility to take action. Dr. McQuillan, I'd like to ask if there's another opportunity to testify, if you could let us know, because that's something I would be interested in going to if and when the opportunity arises.
I'll be glad to let you know.
Thank you. And then, just further. And, and then just further, it's not up to, under this law, it's not up to Walton and Medford whether or not their students can come as freshmen. It's the law that they cannot come as freshmen. And so it's doing the exact opposite of what you suggested, Mr. Weiss.
Ms. Flood.
What he said, and seconded by you, but I will add to that, Jack, I don't think it makes a difference whether we are filling two out-of-district or 20 out-of-district or 200 out-of-district. The principle still applies that students should have equal access to the spaces that we have available and I'll agree with that.
Ms. Luka.
So it's a regulation though, and it's very important because this regulation has, has gone back and forth. It's been a seesaw. In the early 90s, it was Commissioner Antonucci who made it a, the regulation that the exploratory kids couldn't come, but that was overturned by the then Commissioner Driscoll, I think, in 2001 or thereabouts. And partly under pressure from Minuteman because, because it is, Chapter 74 is the vocational choice program that allows students to choose their vocation. You don't force them to take a course to become a plumber when what they really wanted was to be a hairdresser, just because it's not offered in their hometown. And that is the key to Chapter 74. So by denying the kids in the ninth grade access to these exploratory programs in the ninth grade, the kids don't come here in the 10th grade, they don't leave their high school, they make an emotional and friendship commitments to their high school in the ninth grade and they will not come in the 10th grade. So by this change in regulations, they are effectively denying the vocational students only the option of choice. Other students can choose, they can join the choice program to the academic choice openings that are around, but through the lottery system. They will not have that option for, in the vocational system, in reality. So the current Secretary of Education, I believe in Mr. Pfizer, and the current governor were on the Board of Education at the time when the other regulation was, was changed to make it so that the exploratory kids had access. So they should be very familiar with the arguments for this. And it is strictly a political move that has, that has changed this rule again. It is not for the benefit of the students. And I think we should take the high road. We took the high road before, we've done it over and over and over again.
Mr. McJerrance.
I have to ask a quantifying question. I think last year we had 80 out-of-district freshman students. Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
That sounds right.
And how are we going to be impacted this year?
This year, there's very little impact.
In what respect, would it be 60 or 70 or?
You mean in terms of how many students are being denied access to Minuteman?
No, it will be the total number of freshman students from out of district.
Oh, I don't know, Jack, do you know what the current count is?
Probably about that same number that you just said. It's not the impact this year, it's the following.
Right.
And what, my confusion comes up, and I think that we're all good-hearted people and we're generous people and so forth. But each one of these tuition students that comes in the store, we have to subsidize $7,000 for each one of them. That comes out of assessments, that was assessed dollars. 20 cents of every assessment dollar is used to subsidize out-of-district tuition students at this point. At the same time, the tuition rate is going down. It was $19,000 per student. In a couple of years, it could be down to $15,500. Besides asking for a capital fee, we should also be asking for an operational fee to make up that $10,000 that we're going to be losing, that we're going to have to subsidize each out-of-district tuition student. But I would suggest that we could probably invoke a solution right now. Why don't we just, you know, admit choice students? The choice program is a, is a decision between the parent and student and the receiving school. And, you know, have a regulation, this is not a law, it's a regulation by the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education. And so choice, I think, is a reasonable solution if we really want to extend and be very generous, you know, we're going to have to quantify the term number of towns, how much more that's going to cost us, but it would simplify the whole process of bringing in more out-of-district students. And my last comment would be on this, is that I think we should just let the, the courts sort it out. I mean, fine, let's send a letter. It's probably going to have little impact if any. But I think the three of the impact is really going to come when the courts begin to sort this out and the capital fee that they want to charge out-of-district towns and so forth, and then that'll be satisfied. But, you know, it's a nice level, let's run the letter.
Mr. Spalding.
This is Sharon and Gary and Alice. I want to thank you for thinking about students and thinking about kids getting an education. I don't care whether it's for Minuteman or Madison Park. I think for kids to have an opportunity with this kind of exposure, this kind of education is so important and needs to be done as early as possible. Your freshman year is as early as possible in this. Thanks for remembering the kids and not just government policy.
Ms. Mahoney.
The perspective I have come to is that this was a lobbying effort by these communities. It comes down to the dollar, the almighty buck. Talking to friends that live in some of these larger spending districts, there is no commitment to Chapter 74 infrastructure. Some of the educational books these kids are using in Medford are 15 to 20 years old because Medford does not consider Chapter 74 education a priority. It only became a priority when the Minuteman School District started charging the tuition that it was allowed by law. And then all of a sudden, the push started for items such as this. The kids are the priority. I do, to a point, I do agree with Jack says, is that if they want to mess up their sandbox, let them mess up their sandbox. But the problem is, is it's not the selectmen that are going to pay the price. It, it's not the FIDCOM in those towns that are going to pay the price. It's going to be the kid that becomes part of a quota. And in the bigger towns, they actually have formulas about what is the allowable dropout rate. Any dropout is unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. And if we have the opportunity to give a kid that wants to think a better mousetrap, I, I think as a citizen, we have to do our utmost to make those opportunities available.
Seeing no further discussion, we come to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table? And the, she's not to count, Jack, you know. You can have your own opinion, I don't care, but I have to count. I think it's, Mary Ellen isn't here, so it'd be 14, so it'd be 13 in favor, one opposed. Oh, you understand, one abstention and one opposed. So it'd be 12 in favor, one abstention, one opposed. Thank you. And does that complete your report, Mr. Superintendent? Very good. The Assistant Superintendent report, Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First three items under my reports are strictly informational. The first item is we did receive our E&amp;D certification from Department of Revenue on April 24th. We were informed that the E&amp;D balance is $104,008.19. For those of our newer members, the Excessive Efficiency Fund is similar to a town's free cash balances, if you will, which is basically our equity here as of June 30th, 2014.
Mr. Peter.
What was the E&amp;D certified at last year?
I don't have that, I don't have that with me right now. I want to say it's roughly $200,000, right after the.
I think it was more like $360,000. How come it's less? Why is it less?
Just because we had to move forward with, we had to deal with a lot of those deficits in the revolving accounts that we had to deal with and turnbacks as of the end of the year was much less than what it has typically been.
Are there, Jack?
Chairman, if we talked about this in the Finance Subcommittee, I apologize.
We have not.
Oh, okay. We have, so we start fiscal year 15 with $100,000 of E&amp;D. We have a revenue plan that projects contributing $100,000 of E&amp;D towards this year's operating expenses. And we just approved a fiscal year 2016 budget amended, or revenue plan amended, that projects that we're going to use $145,000 more of E&amp;D towards next year's budget. How does all that work if we're starting from $100,000?
The $104,000 that's certified by, by the Department of Revenue takes into consideration the $100,000 as funding FY 50.
Great.
And then when we close out this year, we'll make sure that, as I, as I did talk it, when we looked at the March 31st quarter, quarter ending reports, we're looking at somewhere around $100,000 for E&amp;D as of June 30th.
And you're still holding that?
Still holding that, yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin on that? Okay.
Just one, Cheryl. And just to clarify, clarifying the first paragraph, the $104 is not in excess of the 5%, so nothing of that this time is going back to the town.
No, that's correct. The, the next item on, under my report is just an update on where we are in the state budget. I provided for you a report from Department of Revenue that shows the Senate Ways and Means Proposal. The Chapter 70 funding that, that's being provided is pretty consistent with what we budgeted. The school transportation number is, under the Senate Ways and Means Proposal, is $944,000, which is about a 73% reimbursement. We're budgeting at $813,000, we're, we budgeted closer to 60%. This information is just to keep you updated, is where we are with the state budget process. It's an evolving number and I just wanted to keep the committee informed. Third item is a report, just a recording to the committee, the surplus furniture that we were able to take advantage of from the transition of the Conca Cala High School to their new school. They had a surplus day, if you will, and invited some nonprofits and other local schools to participate to see if there was some furniture that they could, could be reused. I have Matt Klain in our maintenance department, I'm with Jack Gillen and some of our staff were able to go down and inspect and take advantage of some of those items and I just provided that in this paper for your information. Here we go. The next item on the agenda is consistent with our school committee policy on gifts and scholarships. I'm asking the committee to vote to accept the scholarship of the Ryan Eaton Memorial Scholarship Fund. If I might, I just would like to.
Let's see if somebody wants to make the motion.
So note.
If I may, I'd just like to explain the intent of the, of the fund. It's noted on page P47. The Ryan Eaton Memorial Scholarship was established in the memory of Ryan Eaton, a member of the Minuteman High School, class of 2014. He passed away shortly after graduation and was not able to realize his dream. Ryan had a passion for cooking and for life. If you were down, he could always cheer you up and never one did anyone feel left out. He would go out of his way to make everyone around him feel special. He was always willing to lend a hand if you just listened. The scholarship goes to a graduating senior who exemplifies a passion for life and compassion for others. The, the scholarship committee, which basically spearheaded by Eaton's family, had an event here about a month or so ago. It was a lovely event. They, they raised a considerable amount of money. Mr. Spalding spoke and we have the school committee. We'd like the committee to vote to accept the scholarship.
So.
Jeff's back, he can.
Any further discussion by Kevin, Mr. Mahoney?
Kevin, is this a perpetual or is this a one-time scholarship?
They, their intention is to do fundraising each year to try and to keep it perpetual. Under the, under the policy, anything over $1,000 needs to be deemed a named scholarship. This account has over $6,000 in it now, so it was a very good start for them.
Seeing no further discussion, I bring into the vote, on to the motion on the table, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
The next item is a car donation, a 1964 factory-built Cobra. You see on page 40, the, the donation receipt. This is to be used, it is not to be driven on the road and to be used in auto tech.
Would somebody like to make the motion? Ms. Luka has made the motion by raising her hands to the item D and it's consecutive. Discussion. No. I already have.
He's got a picture too.
Wow.
Some, some of you might be surprised to know that they're on to waste.
For $10 to the Ryan Eaton Scholarship Fund.
We showed that picture in Medford. I don't think we have to worry about the kids not coming.
Seeing no further discussion, come to the vote, all in favor of the motion on the table. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One final item, I am going to offer an amendment to it, but the intent of the request here is consistent with the, what we budgeted in fiscal 16 to do some site improvement work. We asked our on-call engineering firm, Gale Associates, to do some preliminary engineering and design services to look at our access road, our perimeter roads, ADA accessibility and some other safety issues relative to sidewalk and entrance and plaza improvements. They sent to me the proposal to do the design work, it's included on page 50, requesting $44,000, total fee estimate of $44,000. Because we'd like to get some of this work done during the summer, I'm requesting that the committee transfer some money from the FY 15 budget to allow them to begin immediately. And the initial request that I provided was $24,000 because that's the, the scope of work that could be done between now and June 30th. In discussions I've had with them recently, as this morning, I'll note on page 50, you'll see on the bottom of the oldest options, there may be an E&amp;D for existing condition survey and weapons evaluation. That's an additional $12,500. I had not originally provided that in my memo to the committee to transfer because I thought we might be able to get that information from Castlebooth's and I'm still working on that. But in the event we need to do that work, I would like to increase my request to, from $24,000 to $36,500 and I wanted to proceed with this scope of work.
So everything remains the same as the motion on item 8F, except the amount goes from $24,000 to $36,500, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Thirty-six, right, to thirty-six five, correct. Yeah, Ms. Flood.
First of all, I was going to say, since the Finance Committee hasn't been able to meet recently, I appreciated having the explanation in advance for, for all to look at. My question would be, since it sounds like part of it is conditional, would, would go ahead and transfer the entire amount, being up to as needed?
Yeah, what I'm requesting is, to the extent that that work does not need to be done, we simply won't spend it. I just want to have that contingency there because I don't want to, we're having a kickoff meeting tomorrow and I don't want to limit their ability to get them what they want to, because we didn't provide enough funding to get this.
Would somebody be willing to move using the language and item 8F as revised by the request of Mr. Mahoney? Somebody would like the second? Second. Further discussion? Mr. Weiss.
Kevin, just to confirm the implied or the obvious, there is plenty of money in a health and life insurance account to withstand an additional transfer of $30,000.
a health and life insurance account to withstand an additional transfer of $36,500 as opposed to $24,000.
Yes, that's correct. It's been holding consistent from our second quarter report and our third quarter report that we were able to identify that early on based upon what the actual rates were that were around, the adopted by the Health Trust, as well as the shift in some of the enrollment. We were able to identify that, that available balance.
Ms. Mahoney.
I'm sure you've already answered this question before us in the past, but was this contract in a ward in pursuit to become a law?
Yes.
Seeing no further discussion, let's move to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11 opposed. Extension is one.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. King.
Very good, thank you. Subcommittee reports, Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluation Subcommittee, David Wood.
Kevin, before I go into the Subcommittee, could I ask Jack Gillon a question? I meant to ask him, he was up and back.
A question related to...
It's related to what I saw in the morning announcements of the school about the recruitment and retention professional-based teachers. You can toss a little more out there.
No, it's beyond the thing, but I can, oh wow, it's a quick answer.
Quick 25 words, is it about recruitment and retention of students? Is that what it's all about?
Correct. We've been working with a recruitment and retention expert.
Yeah.
Mark Perner, he's met with the staff, our team of staff, I'm going to say probably six or eight times over the course of the year. He's been tremendous, believe me. I'm not easily sold by someone that's going to come in and tell us what he thinks needs to happen here, because we are so unique. But I'll tell you what, he's knocked our socks off. And the game plan is on the 28th, as I mentioned, he's met with a specific team, but now on the 28th, we want him to meet with staff and get staff on, because as we know, you guys have all worked tremendously hard on helping us recruit and retain students. We need everybody on board. I think that's been mentioned throughout the night. We not only need you as a school committee, we need our entire staff to get on board. So that's what the 28th is about.
Would you, could you report back to us at some point what they achieved or recommended? I think that was a great idea.
Okay. Subcommittee reports, Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluation Subcommittee, Mr. Horton.
Just want to jump down to Z first, to the school committee self-evaluation reminder of the May 26th workshop. For people who are new to the school committee, this is the result of, as the item says, a self-evaluation done by the school committee. I've chaired a Subcommittee with Dave O'Connor and Nancy Banks, who is a member on the committee. And what we recommended for the school committee, which we accepted, is that we have a workshop given by Darby Pressett, NASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which in the workshop that she's doing cuts across, cuts across the areas that we wanted to learn about for ourselves, about ourselves and how we operate to improve our professionalism as a school committee. So as I said at the last school committee, there may be a couple of people who are on our committee who may have had intended something similar in the past, but it wasn't with us. So it's a chance for us as a, as a community of school committee members and as a school committee to hear from one another and to have this processed by Darby Pressett, who from what I understand, she enjoys a great reputation for, for leading this type of workshop. It's next Tuesday from 7 to 9. And could I take a straw vote, see who's coming? How many are coming? She had me in an email, how many people are coming?
Certainly. So who would be coming? That's only from tonight?
Only from tonight, 7 to 9, in this room.
Right, so who's unlikely to be there, but not Kevin?
One, two, three, your hand up now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think you mentioned eight, nine, anybody down there? No.
I have a question.
Could I, any, Jack or Kevin or Ed are you coming down?
Yeah, yeah, we've been told to be there.
On me?
Yes.
And by Liz. Are you coming? So that's, I'll send a vote.
Liz said if she had to be there, so...
You want her.
Great, okay, sorry, Cheryl. Cheryl, do you have a question?
Oh, no. I said, I'm on question mark. I have something going on that day, but I'm going to try my best.
Okay. Well, we'll send out, I'll send you an email, Liz, about reminding people of the refreshment and also maybe kind of...
What's it going to be?
Can't do that, I don't think.
Sandwich should be fine, just tell me what you want. If you start earlier, I'll Indian more food.
You're that vegetarian?
Yeah, we have vegan.
And about, also, also about equipment they need, that she needs, not much, but I would like to know that.
Is it in here?
Here, this room. Will you send us the agenda so we'll have an idea of what it is that we decided we wanted to work on? I'll send you the title, I can send you the title of the workshop.
Okay. So would she go to distribute material at the workshop?
Yeah.
I just want it ahead of time, so I can...
But I'll send her...
But did you see our, the results of our self-evaluation? Because if somebody would forward that to her, that would tell her what we're addressing.
And maybe my colleague from Lancaster too.
Well, I'll send, I can send the title of the workshop, that will...
Right, and that could...
Yeah, she would have a summary on, you know, the NASC website.
I can ask her, I can ask her. I'm going to send her an email tomorrow, but I believe I can send the title. Okay, and good idea for food there, and I'll talk to Liz about that. All right, moving on to Superintendent, to, sorry, Superintendent Evaluation to the Discussion, and also ultimately a vote to approve a salary increase of $3,114,000 to Superintendent based on the current contract.
So, so you can do the discussion.
I think that Mr. Horton wanted to see if there's any questions or whatever of the evaluation first before he...
Or let, let's do what they want to have.
But it was moved and seconded, so, you know, that's what we're going to go with.
So we don't have to, I knew they would have the discussion, that's what I was...
Okay, moved and seconded, great.
In your packet is a summary of the evaluation of our school committee, each individual school committee member. It includes the name of town, the rating that each person gave to that particular goal, and any written comments that the school committee member had submitted. So I hope you've all had a chance to review those. If you have any questions that you'd like to, or comments you'd like to make, this is the time to do that. If Dr. McGowan has any, if he'd like to say about the evaluation or respond to people, that's certainly all right. And then when it comes to the motion, I'll tell you on what that's based, if it goes through. But I would like to, well, yes, I would like to say that per the Superintendent's contract, we need to, to take this vote by June 1st, which would be our treaty to do that. So first of all, any comments or questions about the evaluation? And then if you would want to leave the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. I'm reading because I see. I'm a little bit familiar with doing these types of things, and not very now, but I'm wondering, once you've got all this data, how did you analyze it? Like, or how are we to analyze it? Are each one of these goals, are they weighted, or is there any kind of rating for any of the, for how each, each person rated the superintendents?
Yeah, they're on it. I should tell you. The Subcommittee did not analyze, we brought two days back to the school committee, and I, I don't think I have the, the ratings scale with me, but if you looked at it, I know, no opinion is one of them, significant progress made, met, exceeded, exceeded, yeah, exceeded the, the, what the, what the goal was set for. So it was on a continuum, and people just checked off which they, which they brought up, which they, how they felt the goal was met. Plus, everyone had contact, was able to, had access to data to support the goal and progress reports to the Superintendent.
Because I saw quite a few here that says that they didn't think they had enough information.
Well, that would be something you could ask them, but you had, you did have, you had progress reports, you supplied progress reports to the Superintendent.
Dave, just a comment, because you asked for comments in the process.
We're thinking more about the evaluation itself.
What I was going to say, I found as I went through, it was helpful to have the Superintendent's self-evaluation as to how he met the goals. I, because the thing that I found frustrating in years past is we were being asked to evaluate on things that we had no basis upon which to observe. So we couldn't, at least in my view, often respond. This was, I think, qualitatively and quantitatively better than prior years. But, and not to take words away from him if he has been a comment in this, I think I agree with Jeff on a lot. It would be even better if we could take it the next step and find some way to get kind of a confidential and anonymous opinion from those people who are seeing the Superintendent's job function in ways that we are not as school committee. Because it's really hard, at least in my view, to evaluate somebody's performance when they spend, I'll pick a number, eight, 10 hours a day in the school, and once a month I spend three hours sitting around this room. And so I hope we can find a way to take the next step going forward.
Just a little history for both of your questions. In a previous year, we did do more of the numeric analysis, and we had a long discussion of whether it was valuable later. And we decided that the numeric summaries did not add anything to it. In fact, it ended up being confusing because of some of these inability to really judge in some of these categories. And some of these categories, or at least a few years ago, were dictated by the state. The state's new mandated portions of the evaluations. And some of those categories were things that we don't normally observe, and we have a problem. If you don't normally observe them, how can you really evaluate them? And there's also all sorts of privacy and personnel issues if you try to extract information from other people who are within the administration of the faculty, who are observing the Superintendent in ways that we cannot. So balancing all these issues is a very, very hard thing to do. What I think, the way that I feel, that all our evaluations are compromises. This compromise is better than the last one that we had, so it's an improvement, but we're not in Nirvana yet, and we're closer. So these, the issues that you bring up are issues that we have discussed in the past over many years, and so it's a continuum.
Anyone else? Dr. McGowan, did you want to add anything?
No, I appreciate it. Working with your committee has been a challenge to kind of try to meet the requirements of the educated evaluation law and still get people the information they need. One of the things that I guess I'll comment in generally is, there was a little bit of confusion about the district progress measures report, because people were looking for that to happen to be updated. And I explained to the school committee, I think in October, November, that that was not going to be done, that we've submitted some data in that timeframe, but some folks were still looking for that to be updated. Seventy-five percent of the ratings of the school committee overall were that progress significant met or exceeded were noted on the goals. But one of the things, I guess I'd ask you, if you were to look at these, there really are 12 goals here, not seven, and in private industry, that's, which I was in for a little while, that's kind of a lot. So I, I think what I'd like the school committee to consider is, of these goals generally, you know, what are the top three or the top four that you want to see the Superintendent working on? Because if it wasn't for the help of Mary Ann Hand, my executive team, and Steve, and Liz, I mean, I would have never gotten half of this documentation together in a, I would have been spending, you know, hours a day telling you what I'm doing the other hours of the day. There's like a practical side of it that needs to be addressed in next year.
So you need to get to that, next year, this coming year.
Really need to focus it in. And I can work with Jack too around the school plan, his revision's there to make sure that we're dovetailing our goals. And, and you know, we do have four school-wide goals that I'll, that we're going to continue to have. One of them is the integration of vocational and technical curriculum. We're committed to what we call the executive binder, the reading consultancy, and having professional conversations. The executive team is in the midst of identifying a fifth goal around educational technology that we're going to add to the four. But we've had those same four goals for, I think this is the fourth or fifth year. And we're going to continue to have those four and maybe add a technology one. And I think those ought to be maybe one goal or something, that I report on those somehow, but not breaking them out into five different goals. So I just want to encourage us to laser-like it.
Before we continue, I just wanted to thank Mary Ann Hand, who did a great job of taking all the data and displaying it, putting together this summary sheet. Last year, we used SurveyMonkey, just to press a button, but Mary Ann put all this together, so thank you, Mary Ann.
For those who you don't know, Mary Ann is the supervisor of evaluation.
She was wonderful.
Keeps us all.
Picture around times. Thank you, Mary Ann.
To Dr. McGowan's point, on Goal 3A, the one where we had a lot of the no opinion, did not meet. Speaking to my particular comment, I couldn't find in the material, in the material that was provided, and it was, it was great material, anything that spoke to, is it allowable to, for next year, to put some kind of a footnote in that, you know, because the reason why I responded the way I did is because it gave a qualified date. And now that Dr. McGowan is mentioned, I do recall he mentioned something at a school committee meeting, but...
Yeah, it's a good point, Cheryl.
Yeah. And goals shift.
Yeah, good idea. I remember it, but I don't know. That it was going to be 2019, so, but that's a good point.
I'll just comment that I always find this a very frustrating process. It's a good process this year, it's better than some other years, like Jeff had said. But I, I put it in my evaluation, but I just wanted to tell everybody in case you didn't know, there is an interesting article about the company Deloitte, which has 65,000 employees, and discovered that they were spending $2 million hours a year doing performance evaluations. And as, because of their large numbers, they decided that they would change how they did it and make them simpler. And so I sort of hope that all of this really amazing attention to detail that we're doing in, in all aspects of performance evaluation, maybe there is going to be a little bit of a move in the other direction, maybe the pendulum will swing a little bit, and we'll focus a little bit more on actually getting the job done and not quite as much on, on spending so many hours enumerating things. However, I do find it interesting at the end of the year to kind of look at and see how much I don't know also about what goes on in the school. It reminds me each year that I know quite a bit about what goes on in the school, but there's a lot I don't, and I need to learn more. So I found that interesting. And anybody who doesn't know about this aspect of the DESE rule is that they require that they, that pretty much everything, the highest rating is a met unless it's at like a exceptional level, that would be like a state, you know, demonstration of proficiency. And that's, again, an artifact of our times that is just kind of curious. And people will probably look back on this period in history and just wonder what...
And feel real sorry for us.
Yeah, I felt that in any respect, that met was a really robust rating. There was a couple of... As I was looking, I considered other people, but I worked with another situation. That kind of exists. I consider it robust. Just the next step, and look after the salary increase, is that... Dr. McQuillan will... After we've reviewed this, will set... Will start discussing goals for next year and go through the... Begin the process again. What we also... What we did, something that he did request Dr. McQuillan to, which he did do, was to add a qualitative and a quantitative element to the progress reports. How many of this or of that happened, or who just took this workshop? What was the impact? Qualitatively, what was the impact on students in some cases? But we did ask... We did ask that. We had... We put it quite in those terms a year before, so hopefully we're getting a little better. If you have comments about the process, or I know some people say here, please send them to Liz and Liz's work or to the subcommittee, to begin our work for next year. Okay, moving on to the motion. The figure that you see of $3,714 is what? Is the maximum amount in the contract? Is the maximum amount that the superintendent is eligible? And I'll read what the contract says. Effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, the superintendent will be eligible for an annual salary increase of up to $3,714 for a total annual salary not to exceed $189,414. So this year, he's receiving $185,700. And with these two... The two figures to 2%. The 2% of $185,700 is $3,714, which would give him a salary of $189,414 for FY '16. And as I say, the contract says up to $3,714. So there's discussion on that.
Miss Antio.
I was just letting him know that you wanted to speak.
Thank you. I'm just curious where that salary lies in the range of salaries for similar positions.
I don't have that information for me, but Ed, you may note that it's all... The salaries are all over the place where they back up. But I don't have that data.
It's generally in the range of vocational superintendents in this region.
We actually did do a large analysis of this a few years ago. We had this contract, and it's my recollection.
Quite hard. Is there a motion out?
Yeah, there was.
Thank you.
I also think that, I want to say it was in the news series, but I think it was Channel 5, did it and listed all the compensations. So I think if you go to their website, I saw it in the last week, I think.
Dave?
I think this sort of falls into the previous discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. And it may provide points of evaluations that can be quantified, all right? But in September, we had a Vocational Education Options Committee met for about six months. We looked at all the statistics and data that's available on the D E S E website, five-year projections, and looking back. And come to find out, and also using Minuteman budget books and enrollments. And come to find out that we have fewer member-town students than we had nine years ago, while non-member enrollment has increased 36% over that same nine-year period. We thought that Minuteman's expenses per student were double that of nearby peer vocational schools. Minuteman's was $26,400 assessed for each student, while Essebit Valley and Sherwood Valley Tech charges their member towns approximately $12,500 and $12,600. That's assessment dollars. So we're being assessed more than twice nearby vocational schools. They have doubled, nearly doubled the amount of member-town students that Minuteman has. Over this last five years, teacher attrition rate has been 72%. And there's a basic loss of 57 teachers over that same five-year period. In that same five-year period, this is all on the D E S E website. You can go to school profiles, district profiles, and review it under the dark data. MCAS math and science scores have been falling every year for the last five years. For all students, Minuteman is below state averages for math and science. Minuteman student stability rate is below the state average. Minuteman freshman attrition rate, and his students not returning from one school year to the next, is 4.6%. Minuteman freshman female attrition rate is 8.9%, which is three times the attrition rate of male freshman students. Minuteman attrition rates, and we double those of nearby peer vocational schools. And we have a... Perhaps some points you could put into the evaluation. We have to lower our cost. Our peer schools are, you know, helping form us, and we need to raise our educational standards.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else?
I actually have a quick comment. I'm very happy to go for this raise of superintendent based upon his performance over the last few years.
I'm also in favor of this. And I hope, I look forward to next year being a year which superintendent used to know a long, long, long time ago, before I had anything to do with Minuteman. Used to call it Points of Pride. I'd like to see, focus on the Points of Pride at the school, and I'd like to hear about it. I'm tired of hearing people dragging the school down in one way or another. And I'm with the school committee even doing it. And I would like to see everybody talking about the school, because that's how things get turned around and made successful.
Ford?
I'm in favor of it. I spend a fair amount of time at the school. I also spend a fair amount of time out in the communities. And I know what this superintendent does. And as I went through the evaluation, I thought it was interesting. And I just look at the building process. When we... He talked about in there of seeing, having this... Excuse me. The students and the faculty involved. Well, I went to three meetings, and I don't even think that was the majority of meetings. I think there were probably six or seven meetings they had with the entire faculty, with students. Probably five or six groups of students came in over a period of time. And I think, I think I would say to this school committee, I think you need to be more engaged. And I think it's not just coming to a meeting for three hours. I think it's really becoming engaged. And if you want to go and talk about how you can help recruit, set up a meeting and go with the superintendent to talk to your schools. Sit down with them. It's a very easy thing to do. It's a phone call. And the superintendents are delighted to do that. And I did that with my superintendent. We had a head of guidance. We had the headmaster there. And I think we've had some action in our little town about sending students. I have been in contact with some students from the town that are gonna come here. I've also been in contact with students that are here, and I've gotten very fond of a couple who I've had the opportunity to see. I'm having lunch with one of them the week after next. I think we need to be more involved, and if you're more involved, and that's not just sitting at home and not coming here for three hours. If you're more involved, the superintendent will welcome it. The faculty will welcome it. And I think you'll see what goes on in this school on a daily basis. This superintendent, and I have to say this, I don't agree with him all the time, but when I disagree with him, I meet with him and talk to him about it. And some of the administration knows some of my differences. I think that's what you all should do. You should spend time with the superintendent and sit down and talk to him. He may not like that idea that I suggested that, but become engaged. There's a graduation coming up. I don't know who's... How many people are going to graduation? I don't know how many of you have been to a Minuteman graduation. But you made a big mistake representing your community and not being there. And I... So I think become engaged as he said you can. I'm lucky, I have some time that I can do some of these other things. But I think the school committee is at call for not being engaged and active in this school.
Cheryl?
Thank you, Mr. Horton. I love what you said, and I love what you said, Alice. And I just want to say that I'm gonna abstain for the same reason I abstained from this evaluation, because I just don't feel like I'm qualified to vote on this.
Anyone else? I should call the vote, Cheryl?
All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
In favor, it's opposed. One opposed, abstentions, two abstentions. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I just, before we close out this item, Mr. Horton, who was on your committee who worked on this?
Gabriel Connor and...
So although you see this result all wrapped up nicely in a capiche and a bow, the amount of work required to go through the regulations, put this together, to communicate with the superintendent and everybody else, the amount of work is enormous to do this. And the subcommittee, although one is gone and one is not, they did a fabulous amount of work. It was a great amount of work in presenting and making it accessible to us. Now, Mr. Horton, once again, the minutes. Why not the secretary?
I knew that the minutes of April 14th, 2015, be accepted. Second?
Second, but...
Oh, seconded. But I quit seconded, but it wasn't good.
Second, yes.
The comment I wanted to make is that, and for the last meeting of the school committee, is I believe the only, first and only meeting of this school committee that I have missed since being appointed. I've been late a couple of times. But I think it was the first one I missed. Which means that this was the first time I read the minutes, not as a, how did this reflect what I heard at the meeting? And what do we have to say in minutes? But to inform me about what happened at the meeting before I came tonight, so I knew what the background was. Liz, you do a better job than I even thought when I was clerk. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. I don't know what was right or wrong.
Any further comments on the motion on the table? All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. And only people who were there, three, one, two, three, four, five. One. And I got it counted all the way. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight in favor, opposed, none in abstentions, one... Two abstentions. Mr. Manjares has left the building. And that is that vote. And again, Mr. Horton, thank you for taking on this responsibility. I appreciate it. That's a great motion, but just before we adjourn, all I want to say is Jennifer and Sharon, thank you so much for all the committee. I didn't have you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
And I shall say about Sharon.
You may.
Two people who just joined the committee. We know Sharon wasn't able to be at her meeting. You did one heck of a job helping us put it together. The number were a huge help, also for me personally. And I want to thank you all for having me. With commuting and everything. You struck the subject, you got the job done. And I appreciate it.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please raise your hand. That's a good decision. Bye, hopefully.